Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Budget's Work Session, or I guess Adoption for the Budget for 2017. I'll call this meeting to order. Y'all have had a chance to look at the agenda. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as written?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Staff has one request of a change after consultation with our city attorney. We would like to add the selection of the qualifying dates for the 2017 municipal election. And unfortunately, we have a limited amount of time to get the information back to the county. So we'd like to be able to talk about the dates for qualifying and get those booked and back to the county.
Who do you want to add that?
We can add that at the end of the agenda as G, as in golf, qualifying dates. N-FI.
Item G, qualifying dates.
Item G.
G. Any others? Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as written?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
We got a motion.
Motion carries. That's right. Okay, public comment. And as always, if you would sign in, put your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. And just as a general statement, someone from staff will get back to you with any questions that you have.
Okay. First off, I just wanted to encourage the council to go with a $10,000 rollback instead of $5,000 for senior citizens. It was pointed out to me yesterday that a lot of the senior citizens have been paying no city tax. So rather than have a huge shock to them with just $5,000, that it might be more appropriate to do the $10,000 rollback. And the second issue I wanted to say and encourage you to give an assistant to the city manager. Now, the reason for that is I do know how hard he works, and he is one of the hardest working city managers we've ever had. And he puts his phone number out there and is on call over the weekend. And I know this because I have used that number a lot. And not just for news stories or anything, but if I see trash somewhere or whatever. In fact, I have called him at 10:30 at night to point out a trash issue that was taken care of the first thing the next morning. So I know he's available, and for that kind of service, he may need a little help. Now, the council is against full-time. I can understand that. And I understand that if you want to revisit in a year whether you want to maintain the part-time or go to full-time, I do understand that too. But he probably needs a little help, and he can't use a volunteer because of confidentiality issues. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, President.
Dennis Brown, Mirror Lake, 2017, Mariner Way. I won't take much of your time considering the import of this afternoon's adoption of the budget. But I did want to pass along a couple of kudos, I think, for the important and pertinent to this afternoon's special call session. First, the continued attention and emphasis on communications with the Villarica constituents by our city staff is to be lauded. Nothing happens in our city without the setting of priorities by our elected officials. And Mr. Millirons has obviously taken that task to him, to her, for his use and able assistance of Alyssa, among others, of social media, email blast, and the city website has been very much noted and very much appreciated. And second, I've made no secret of my interest in trumpeting the importance of code enforcement if the laws and ordinance you all spend so much time in developing are not afforded the personnel time to enforce. I noticed in the proposed budget that included as a continuation of the 1.5 full-time job equivalents in the city for code enforcement. I guess I misunderstood Mr. Millirons two or three meetings ago when I thought I heard that less than half that time had been allotted this past year. So I'm heartened to find out I was wrong, and I look forward to hearing of and seeing impact of the code enforcement positions during the remaining FY '17 months. A comment just to a personnel assistant for Mr. Millirons, no question that he might need it. I don't think he's going to work any less, to be honest. That's just his nature. I know what it's like because I have that myself in my previous some years of education administration. But anyway, my hat's off to all of you for recognizing the importance of these two areas because nothing happens in the city that shouldn't happen in the city that hasn't been set as a priority by this body right now.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Michael Young, Costa Point Drive, 9634, Costa Point Drive. I had anticipated doing it or find a synopsis of the changes to the budget online, and I couldn't find it. Other than both of you being in power documents, there's nobody for private individuals out here to see what changed in this meeting. The other thing I'm concerned about is the new senior exemption is nowhere near what we used to have. It used to be a full exemption that was means tested, and now we've got this thing that I don't know where it came from. So I'm wondering why we came up with this instead of just doing what we have properly?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So everybody wants to know how much is new. So we're talking right now on our sheet, free in population, 353. Top line says $10,000, 353. Total tax reduction is going to be $20,000 on our example. We're talking $36,000 down to $22,000. Taking it all the way down to $500, you should slide to $500. Tax, total tax. Go down on that portrait page, fair market value, 96,000. Forty percent fair market value, 38,500. Maxed, now $250,000, 36,360. Well, yes, we do, but if fair market and tax rate, to find out that how much is actually taxed and actually due, you want to know how much revenue you're going to lose. So $10,000, 353, you find out you're going to lose $65,430 in income. If you make $5,000, you're going to save $6,902. You'd be doing none, you will collect 8,830. But we know that the exemption is going to go past the year. We know that the household, the household number is going to increase. So why don't we take the population, take it up to say 500, or we can even take it back to maybe landscape pay. This is population increase in total tax reduction. When you take it out to 100, this will tell you what the total tax reduction is going to be. So you have a number of things you can look at. Five thousand, ten thousand, or on the zero. See what's left. Down the bottom, you do have a number that will tell you how much you actually lose.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on from our public comments portion of the meeting. Item A, Budget Discussion.
Well, my biggest surprise was to see the new budget was $936,000 bigger than the one we had just gone through. And I understand there's an explanation for that. And I really expected when we cut the budget to which is a smaller number. It has grew by almost a million dollars.
David?
That's correct. After the budget was actually generated and disseminated, I believe, back in October, obviously, this council had authorized a movement with the State Department of Transportation for the roundabouts on the North Loop project. Originally, estimates for that was ballparked at a meeting with the state, about 100,000 engineering, give or take. Once the state got the feedback from the city council and started looking at everything, including engineering, environmental studies, land acquisition, et cetera, the estimate ballooned to just over half a million dollars. This body, of course, knows that that money will be reimbursable back to the city. So the state now has those figures. They're negotiating out the final pay rates, and we expect probably within the next 60 days that a reimbursement or contract will be forthcoming to the city for the council to actually execute. So in order to move forward with that project, as the council so chose at that meeting, we actually have to show an expenditure on the books, and then we have to show a receivable for the money that will come back. So when you combine those two, yes, sir, it looks like about a million dollars. But in reality, it is flush. But you have to be able to account and budget for that because you will have an expenditure, and then you'll ultimately have a receivable back for that.
Is that for the full $936,000? You just mentioned 503,247. Are you talking about right? Million six, 500.
Ms. Mayor, when you speak, can you use the microphone by chance? We may have a little portable stand for you if that doesn't move.
While David was doing that, you know, I have thought about this long and hard, and I had the same question that Councilman Carter had about the budget. We had asked that staff come back to us with a trimmed budget, and then when I got the second budget that was 900 and something thousand dollars more, I went, wow, either the calculator stopped working or we didn't say what we wanted. But, you know, I was able to work through that. But it is, you know, it is somewhat confusing with all of, you know, I think a lot of times what we want to see, or maybe I want to see, is just, you know, how much are we bringing in, how much are we spending out? And I say that to say this. I think we need to be very careful, and I've expressed this to the city manager earlier. I think we need to be very careful when we're borrowing from our cash reserve to front ourselves money for SPOS projects, in particular because, as we all know, there have been problems in the past with SPOS in Douglas County and Carroll County. And we're all anticipating that that number that was projected when that referendum was passed will come in in five years. We all know that that may not happen. Now, we all hope that the economy continues to grow, but if that doesn't happen, then we have basically taken money out of our fund balance, and we're not able to pay ourselves back. So we're loaning ourselves money, and it's, you know, it's one of those shell games where you're moving money from one fund to another. But we all need to be, you know, this is a small amount that we're talking about this year in the scheme of things, but we just all need to make sure that we're aware that there could be a time down the road when we regret that and say, whoops, we're not going to be able to pay our fund balance back.
And from an accounting standpoint, and those are excellent points, so we go through a what's called a high point, midpoint, and low point so that when we actually look at the fund balance and actual revenues, expenditures, and expenses and expenditures that occur, that's taken into account. Certainly on the SPOS loan, that was, is being done for one year. You will start to have money coming in. So as far as this governing body is concerned, you're only really talking about accessing fund balance for that one-year expenditures, and then starting to pay as you go as the money comes in and repay. And then same thing, very much like your TE grant program with the Fullerville Trailhead. That's money that you, as a governing body, have been expending for at least the past five years, and then you haven't seen any of that come back, but yet you see it on the books as a receivable. So those are examples of basically loans that you have out there, if you will, but you have agreements that the state and/or federal government's going to repay this city, back those funds. So we're very conservative when we're factoring in those. And at the end of the day, it's really the will of the council as to whether or not it wants to approve various projects, sir.
Thank you, David. On page 35, this is a question. Down where the transfer, operating transfer to hotel motel tax, we have $78,000 budgeted or proposed for 2017. If approved, when would the new change take place?
That will be dependent on the signature, number one, of course, the approval of this council. Then the next is the process of the local legislation. Once it goes through the House and Senate, it's local legislation. Then at that point, it's really becoming on, if I'm not mistaken, the governor's signature. Generally, normal legislation is July 1st, but sometimes local legislation can be put forth. And I've seen local legislation signed and implemented locally ahead of schedule. But worst-case scenario would be July 1st, sir.
Thank you. That answers that question?
And then there would be a timetable working that it actually has to be implemented with the Department of Revenue and DCA. So I would anticipate you're really looking probably September 1, maybe, to actually start collecting the new amounts, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to keep asking questions until somebody else raises their hand. So on page 53, I love Excel spreadsheets, by the way, Sarah, I really do. But here, and you know this, you probably know more than I'll ever know about Excel spreadsheets, but I think you have a mathematical error on page 53, just since this is an official document. Under total public works, I believe that number didn't populate. I think it should be 1,968,639. Maybe just your formula didn't populate.
Which year?
Error it down on 53, you say?
Page 53, under total public works. Is that the third line?
Total public works.
You saying the 2017?
Correct. Right now, it's 1,467,65,393. Maybe my calculator acted up, but I believe it's supposed to be more.
You're right. I have to manually update the pages to the link stack. I got them all, so.
I hate that. I've done that myself, so that's not criticism. I just wanted to point it out since it's an official document.
What is the real number? Did you add it up?
The actual, the number in the total down below that is right. It's just that particular sub. When you change sheets, a lot of times it won't populate, and that's what happened with that. But her total is actually correct at the end.
What's the number for the line item you're talking about? Go a little slower, a little bit louder. 640?
Yes.
I don't want to have to add that.
Under the total for public works, the number is $54,400 higher than the first request. Page 71, bottom of the page.
That is, two part-time guard positions were added to the community service area.
Thank you. I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure. I made a comment at the first, after, at the first meeting that I would really like to see next year's budget split out in the Recreation Department, and I appreciate y'all doing that. It's a lot more, I think it's a lot more helpful to the council to look at those different departments separately than as one large group.
On that last item he was talking about on the public works, is that showing up in the regular employees' number? Because it's 622, 823 versus 572.
Yes, it shows up in the regular employees and the FICA.
Oh, that's not just one full-time, three-part-time. You said a couple more got added to it?
Yes, we have, we added two more part-time guard positions in community service.
Oh, from three to five part-times?
Correct.
I guess I'll keep on going. Page 92.
You're on a roll. I mean, why not?
Page 92. We are asking for $211,243 in capital expenditures for roads for 2017. The council may have received this previously. I have not received a list of those roads.
The council hasn't approved those roads yet for 2017. This is your LMIG plus your 30%, sir.
Thank you. So we'll be given that list at some time.
Yeah, and the council has previously already adopted a list. You'll have to revisit that list because obviously you haven't been able to go all the way down that list. So that list will be brought back to the council. I'm also going to, I've asked the county for some bid information. Is the one subdivision that keeps, it's on the top priority list, it's in Councilman Best's district, which is the Trails of Charleston Place. Those roads are due to be topped, but that's roughly, I think, on the figure, something like 80,000 or 90,000. So I'm waiting for the county to get back with me on some numbers where they provide the labor and equipment, we provide the asphalt. So I'm trying to get those numbers in line before I come back for the council because we have pricing attached to all the other roads from the previous bid documents, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I got one problem with this new budget versus the old. Page numbers don't agree anymore. Because that 92 and 93 is not the same as the old budget we worked off of. 92, 93 is wastewater treatment plant.
I think that's because of the additions to, of this museum and...
Yes, when I split out the rec, I increased the page numbers. The table of contents was updated, if that helps.
Do you see it?
I'm going to have to look for the other one because I no longer can go to this page and look at it to compare the two.
Well, no, but like I was saying previously, we split out, or they split out the Recreation Department into several different categories. That's why the number's changed. But the table of contents on the first is, is that clear as mud?
Yep, clear as mud. Yep.
Interesting, because we went through this whole thing last week on, last work session. We sent the city manager back with a number of changes to make. He sent us a report saying that he'd made all those changes, and then there was an increase by the million dollars. So we were looking for some clarification on that. We have that now, unless there's some more changes. I don't, I don't have any to propose.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I don't hear any more comments, I would entertain a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
So move.
Have a motion to approve the 2017 budget. Do I have a second?
Yeah. The revised.
The revised budget as proposed.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to Tab B, Budget Ordinance, the option of the 2017-18 Operating in Capital Budget retroactive to January 1, 2017.
That's kind of sort of what you just did.
I thought it was, but...
Yeah. So you can do it again and just reference ordinance, but, you know, it is an ordinance, and under your veto power, you have 10 days to veto. So I just want to set that for the record. So I would defer to your city attorney, but, you know, this is an ordinance and you're adopting it. And so usually, you know, we'll read, "This is an ordinance adopting the city budget for fiscal year 2017 for the City of El Reco appeal conflicting ordinances," and to provide an effective date for other purposes. And so usually, you know, we'll read, "This is an ordinance adopting the city budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen for the City of Villarica to appeal conflicting ordinances and to provide an effective date for other purposes."
The record, why would we not have an ordinance number?
Uh, because we haven't assigned, uh, you, you never assign an ordinance number until it's actually, um, adopted. We could generate twenty ordinances, but until you adopt them, the clerk doesn't assign numbers.
Would you like for me to read that, or you want to read it? (laughing).
All right. For other purposes.
Um, those other purposes are stated in the ordinance, so that's just a generic for other purposes, because otherwise you would have to list the whole entire ordinance in that little paragraph, sir. That's just an introduction. Um, it lists, uh, section one, section two, section three, section four, section five, section six, six. And then, of course, uh, I see a, uh, error here, because it says section five, section six again. Um, so I guess that's really seven and eight. We'll correct that before signature if it's passed.
It was writ- was in our, um-
I think it's written in there.
Was it the agenda, but I- Okay, I see. The agenda called for retroactive, but you want me to clue that, okay?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, let, let me work on that.
For the benefit of the council, if you refer to section number one, adoption by reference, um, it is stated in there, the last line, we updated, say, retroactive to January first, two thousand seventeen, uh, in order to cover you. And this way, when the ordinance goes before the auditors, it matches the act of the council. And then when it goes to the state, the state auditors understand that this, um, is retroactive to January one.
All right, did you read that left bottom paragraph there? Okay, section one. All right, that pretty much covers what you're asking. Okay, I'm making a motion to adopt the ordinance, adopting the city budget fiscal year two thousand seventeen, the City of Villarica, reveal conflicting ordinances to provide an effective date and for other purposes.
Have a motion to second. Discussion? Not all in favor? Approved again. Thank you. Okay, uh, item C, senior homestead exemption.
Mr. City Attorney. By the way, for the benefit of the council, um, just moments ago, I did get the, uh, data that you all had asked for. Um, it came, the request came in via email, um, for Douglas County. Um, so although, um, for those in the audience, uh, you have, uh, information on there that gives a breakdown for Carroll County and, uh, pardon my writing, but Madam Clerk, um, I'll project the information for both Carroll and Douglas side by side, because I just wrote it out.
How many in Douglas County was it?
Um, I, she now has it, so it's, um, three hundred and fifty-one.
Almost identical. That's ironic. There's only a difference of two. Which means that same amount. Twice twenty-three is forty-six thousand total.
Drop that if you hear. Just don't block the camera. Uh, there goes blocking the camera. (laughing).
No longer in effect, and if the city does intend to replace the former senior tax exemption, you'd need to take some action very quickly. Uh, it still remains to be seen whether or not the legislature would be able to enact this, get it through the process in enough time to have a, a vote on it in March. But if you take action on it today, we can at least give it a try to see if the, uh, legislature can move it fast enough and if the governor will sign off on it sooner than the governor normally signs off on bills. Typically, they wait until the conclusion of the legislative session for the governor to sign bills. If that happened, then we simply couldn't have it in March. But, uh, perhaps our legislative delegation can try and push it. It may be beyond their control, but, um, th- this is our only chance to possibly get it on the March ballot. Uh, I did check to find out if we were all able to accomplish, but the cost of having a special election is going to probably be somewhere in the range of five to ten thousand dollars. Uh, to have that, because it would not be held in conjunction with any other elections, and if it were held in March. Uh, if it gets held in November, then it would be in conjunction with other elections, and the, the cost would be, it would be a cost the city's going to have to bear anyway, because we're going to have council elections. But if it were held in November, then the exemption, the, uh, the, uh, city would not be able, excuse me, uh, able to apply the exemptions for the twenty-six, twenty-seventeen tax year. So to have any chance of, uh, applying it this year, we need to act promptly on it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I got a comment.
Okay.
Um, if we gave a exemption of ten thousand dollars, what we're doing is for each applicant or each qualifying home, that's a sixty-five dollar reduction in the taxes for the city. That means, uh, the city gives up sixty-five dollars for each one of them. They give up roughly twenty-three thousand dollars in Carroll County and twenty-three thousand dollars in Douglas County, so we're giving back to the people about forty-six thousand dollars. Which isn't a whole heck of a lot, but, um, so the ten thousand dollar exemption, a sixty-five dollar reduction in city taxes for those seniors, I think is a good deal.
When I started taking a look at this, I went to see what other cities around us were doing. I think it's on. Is it on? And so what I found was that Douglasville offers a four thousand dollar tax exemption. Bowden offers a six thousand dollar tax exemption, and Mountain Zion offers a two thousand dollar tax exemption, and Carrollton offers a zero tax exemption. These are just for seniors. Obviously, on your, your tax line for either county, uh, the, the exemption that we offer is strictly for the City of Villarica taxes. Um, and I s- and, and what Danny's saying is exactly right. If you just look at what the value of that exemption is, uh, at the ten thousand dollar rate, it's forty-six thousand dollars as a cost to the city, and at five thousand, it's twenty-three thousand dollars of a cost to the city. I'm inclined to stick with what I said last week, which is five thousand dollars.
Let me just, let me just make a comment too, ju- just for those that may not understand exactly why we're even doing this. And David and David, y'all correct me if, if I get out of line here, but basically, why we are where we are is because the, uh, exemption that was applied back in two thousand fourteen, uh-
Two thousand four.
Two thousand four, I'm sorry. I had the four right. Um, was applied in a way that it shouldn't have been applied. Uh, and basically, it was being, um, levied in Douglas County differently than it was being done in, in Carroll County. I'm right so far. And, uh, so basically, what we have done is a ca- what you will be doing as a council is riding that ship in, in the, you, you know, not, you know, the comment has been made out there that, uh, that the city doesn't care about its seniors, and, and I, I don't think that's a fair statement. I think what we're trying to do is, is a council up here, uh, is to ride that ship, make it right, and to give the voters, uh, the option of whether that exemption should take place for seniors or not. And, uh, and I think that we should always try to involve the voters and let them decide when, when we're able to do that, so.
Well, I'd say you're right, but you're not quite accurate. Two thousand four, we passed the, um, property tax exemption. It was really aimed at low-income people, less than ten thousand dollars worth of earnings. And it was phased in across a four-year period. However, somewhere along the way between then and now, the county started applying it to all senior citizens, irregardless of, uh, income. And we have determined that the, um, income, trying to verify income means, is just unwieldy and unmanageable. So that's why we're now trying to apply it just to senior citizens in general, instead of trying to go back to the low income. Which means somebody's got to be checking their income every year to make sure they qualify. That's highly unmanageable.
So the ten thousand would do what? Would bring, the citizen would still have to pay, but it would be less for ten than it would be for five. Am I right?
Correct.
It's a sixty-five dollar savings for the homeowner at ten thousand. It's half that at five thousand.
So the higher the exemption, the less the taxpayer would be paying.
Of course, the higher the exemption, the more, the most we're going to give up, um, is about forty-six thousand dollars total with a ten thousand dollar exemption. So it just depends on how much the city's willing to give back to the seniors.
Further discussion? Questions?
I think one point to note on this also is that, uh-
Should we make one?
I, I think it is, and I'll try and speak up. I think one point to make, uh, in your deliberations here is that in order for our legislative delegation to consider this as submitting that as, as a bill and getting it passed, it really needs to come out of this council as a unanimous decision. If it comes out as a three to two or four to one vote, uh, chances are it just is not going to get submitted for consideration. So, uh, I would urge you to try and come to some type of unanimous consensus on this issue if we've got any chance of getting it passed at all.
Thank you, David.
Is that, yeah, I believe, am I accurate, um, David, that the, uh, county, Carroll County gives an eight thousand dollar exemption for seniors, and also Douglas County does the same? I, I saw that in writing.
Yes, I, I think I sent out a note that said that, uh, both counties have an eight thousand dollar senior exemption. Some of them are based on income, though.
Yeah, we can, we've gone away from the income thing.
Yeah, and I would urge you to stay away from them.
I would too.
We are not able to, uh, didn't work before. We're not able to patrol it very well, because we're reliant upon someone other than our own employees to, to manage that. And it just does, it's not worked out well in the past.
If we set ours at eight thousand, we're giving each one a fifty-two dollar reduction in their taxes, each senior citizen that applies for it. They have to apply, or they have to qualify for it.
Counsel, what is your desire? Are you making that in the form of a motion, ma'am?
I was Councilman Best, actually. I haven't heard a word of him yet.
Is his microphone on? Well, there's that, that's why. He's flipping a coin over there.
I think the biggest issue that, that we have here is, is the fact of why we started to do this to begin with. And at that point in time, there were not a lot of folks in the City of Villarica that, period, but even a whole lot less. And then trying to help some of these, uh, folks who've been working in some of the mills around here for twenty, thirty, and forty, and fifty years. The thought process back then was seventy-five dollars a week for those folks were, was a pretty good paycheck. Uh, and, and now we're looking at, at going, some of those folks have gone. I mean, and that's where the, the issue's coming in now. Uh, according to this, there's three hundred and fifty-something people that, um, are, are able to do this. I think back when we first started this, there was a little bit more than a hundred. The issue comes to the whole scenario is, uh, is the city willing to, to do forty-six thousand? Next issue is, what if we go back to the same thing we had before? You know, we're not going to make this decision. We're simply going to put this on a ballot somewhere, somehow, and let the, let the people make this decision. So it, you know, if, if we get this done this year, that's great and wonderful, but if we don't, uh, do we try it again next year? And I think the answer to that is yes, but I would like to get it right the first time. Uh, and, and the problem with that word "right" is there's, I have people here that's got to determine whether what right actually is. I'm not sure, and I think Mr. Carter and myself, and, and, uh, I think Ms. Marchum was, was, uh, off the council that, that time. But I think that the intent of, of, of ourselves were, were trying to help those folks that, that lived in those, the settings of the mill and, and not a whole lot of money each year, uh, or each week. The houses they lived in were, were probably torn down by now, but, uh, the bottom line of the whole scenario is, you know, we've got a choice. Given some type of, of a monetary, uh, placement on the amount of taxes they're going to pay, or go back to the same thing we have now, and not let them pay any taxes at all. I think that's the question that we got to determine, and if we determine that we need to have some more money, um, in, in, in the city, and put that on a ballot and see how that floats, um, that'd be up, you know, that'd be up the rest of us. But, uh, I, I think that's the determining factor that we have to look at. You know, it, it's not about, you know, people used to say it's not about the money. Yeah, it's about the money in this one. This is all about the money. This is about the people that sit out here first Tuesday of each month to make twenty-five thousand dollars a year, struggle to, to get groceries. And it's about the guy that makes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, he don't have to worry about all that, but there's a whole lot more than those twenty-five thousand. They are those two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this city. Uh, it, it just makes, you know, I, I think we need to really consider some things about some of those folks. Whether or not there are some of us on this council that would, would, uh, reap that reward. When we first put this into effect, nobody on the council would, um, was affected by it. It, it, it won't bother me in any way. I mean, my, my taxes, if we went to ten thousand dollars, my taxes would be fifty-two dollars a, a year. Okay? But also, my taxes were, was nothing last year. A lot of folks in this, in this area could say the same thing, so, you know, just how much money we want to, uh, continue with, uh, that's going to have to be the question we have to answer. I think we should also take into consideration that, um, we are giving senior citizens discounts on, uh, garbage and, uh, water and sewage. So in conjunction with that, I think we ought to at least match the county exemption of eight thousand. That's a fifty-two dollar each reduction in their property tax.
The, uh, motion on the floor is for ten thousand, uh, so I would, uh, either need to second-
You made that motion?
Sure.
Councilman Marchman?
Okay, I'll, I'll second her ten thousand dollar motion.
Wait a minute. I, I agree with, uh, Councilman Best, that, uh, in two thousand and four, when that was contemplated, it had a means test on it. And if there were a means test, I would think the ten thousand dollar number would be more appropriate, because it actually targets people who really do need that money. because it actually targets people who really do need that money. I think now, since we're doing away with the means testing, because I haven't heard anyone say that they want to do means testing, it changes the dynamic, because now everyone qualifies just by age and will be getting this reduction. And this reduction is actually a cost to the city, what this is. We sit around here and talk about these budgets, months and months and months, and try to save $10,000 here and $5,000 there, and cut out studies that we put off for another year that are $15,000, and we talk about today just throwing away $46,000 out the window. And I still think that it matters how much money we bring into the city. And these things were misapplied in Douglas County. I think Carroll County... I mean, Douglas County did it correct. They actually had a means test. Carroll County gave it to everyone, and that went on for years. So I think that... I really think that $5,000 is being awfully generous, considering I just told you that Douglasville City was at four, Carrollton zero, Bowden six, and Mount Zion two. I still would like to see us do $5,000.
Just to be clear, I don't consider giving the senior citizens a tax break on their property tax throwing money away. I consider senior citizens have contributed and they have earned that reduction in their property tax.
That was a bad choice of words.
Okay.
That's not what I mean.
Okay. Right now, I have a motion in the second on the floor. Any further discussion? If you would like to change that number, then we will vote on this motion, then I will entertain another motion if this one doesn't pass. So I have a motion...
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, sir.
David, the resolution that you sent... The written resolution that you sent to me with the fill-in-the-blank number, does the council have that?
We do, so, yes.
Okay. Well, I just... I want to make sure, again, for the purpose of the record, we understand that that motion that was made by Councilwoman Marchman, is this written resolution with the number $10,000 filled in the blank?
And I learned from my mistake, so I had already flipped to that page and was going to... That's the next item on our agenda, and I was just going to read that resolution with the number that the council so chooses. So... But thank you, David. Motion in the second to make the senior exemption $10,000. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
We can make... You opposed to that? Let's close this one out, and we want to be unanimous on this. We don't want to go like our city attorney... You know, like our city attorney.
I'm going to move it down some fat, so we see it in my ear.
No. Let me try a different one here that he...
Hang on, hold.
I can interrupt for a sec. If I can interrupt for a second also, if you're going to regroup and change it to some other number, that resolution technically passed by a...
It was two-to-vote.
Was it two-to-two?
And it would be up to hand as to which way to go with it.
Right. So you can either break the tie, or you can abstain, and you can go back to round zero.
Thank you. I will abstain from the vote for the sake of your argument, which is that this needs to be unanimous. I would entertain a counterproposal.
I would make a motion that we reset the exemption at $8,000, which is the same thing Carroll gives, same thing Douglas gives.
I have a motion to make the senior exemption $8,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Call a question? All in favor? Unanimous?
All right. We got an $8,000.
That's not what I want, so.
It's not what I want either, surely, but we do need to be in agreement.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda, then, would be item D, which is the Senior Homestead Exemption Resolution. And David, would you want to read that?
Sure, I'll be glad to. This is a resolution by the city of Villarica, where I ask the mayor and council of Villarica to do desire to request that the Georgia Legislature authorize a referendum upon a proposed new senior tax exemption from municipal taxes. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Villarica, that a bill to be entitled an act provide for homestead exemption from certain city of Villarica ad valorem taxes for municipal purposes in the amount of $8,000 of the assessed value of the homestead for certain residents of the city of Villarica who are senior citizens is attached here to be submitted to the city of Villarica Legislative Delegation with a request to enact the said act at the earliest possible opportunity so that a referendum may be held in March 2017. It is so resolved on this, the blank day of January 2017. That's the motion before you, if somebody makes that.
Would someone make that motion?
So I move.
Have a motion, we'll have a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Not? Call a question? All in favor? All opposed? It is unanimous. Okay. Item E, resolution for railroad crossing. David Miller, do you want to handle this one?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, this is a proposal in response to a conversation with the mayor, myself, and obviously members of the railroad and State Department of Transportation, that essentially safety is the most important thing at the chief street crossing. And one thing that the public had said over and over and over is to increase the fines. We, as a staff, don't have the authority to increase it. The governing body can recommend it, but ultimately, the judge has to make the decision. So this is a resolution to show the will of the council, and if the council agrees to increase to the maximum fine allowable by the city to $1,000 for anyone that violates controlled devices at a railroad crossing city limits, then the city attorney and myself will take the resolution, meet with the judge, and request that change.
Thank you, sir. Discussion by council.
Well, $1,000 is our limit, I take it.
Yes, under state law.
We definitely need to make it severe, because if they keep messing up and trucks keep getting run over by trains, we're going to lose that Chevy's crossing, so.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution for $1,000.
As read by... Well, we haven't read it yet.
Yep.
Second.
I can read the resolution in its entirety if you wish, sir.
Please.
All right. Resolution, city of Villarica, whereas there are several railroad crossings located within the city limits of Villarica, and whereas in recent past, there have been a number of situations in which vehicles have failed to abide by railroad crossing signals and/or traffic signs related to the railroad crossings, and whereas the violation of ordinances designed to protect the public at railroad crossings exposes the public at great risk, and whereas the city does desire to strictly enforce any and all ordinances which relate to the protection of the public at railroad crossings, now thereby, be it hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Villarica, that the standard bond amount for violations of OCGA, for those in the public, that's the official code of Georgia, section's 40-6-140, also 40-6-141, and 40-6-20, as it relates to the failure to obey traffic control devices at railroad crossings, be set at $1,000. It is further resolved that the mayor and council do hereby recommend a minimum fine for violation of said statutes as it relates to railroad crossings at $1,000, subject to the court's discretion to modify the fines as may be deemed appropriate. It is resolved on this 18th day of January 2017.
Do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Not? All in favor? Unanimous. And David, I would just like to add something to that. I know a lot of the truckers out here are using GPS devices, and I think I spoke to you about this, but have we contacted those GPS device manufacturers and told them that that is a road that needs to be restricted for trucks?
That was done last year, sir. Every GPS company was... They were also digitally uploaded photographs of the intersection. So, yes, sir, that's already been done.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else to bring before the council?
There is G, sir.
I'm sorry. You understand that. That's right. How about G, qualifying?
F first, financial administration. Bank accounts and authorized signatures.
Oh, okay. Bombs aren't long enough. Item F, financial administration.
Before the meeting, I handed all of you a list of all of our current accounts. We didn't post this item. Since it's related to our bank account information, Open Record Act says we can exclude that from posting. I got the information from the bank. Under the blue box, you can see the current signers for each of our bank accounts, and our CDs, and our safety box, safety deposit box. And you can see we need to add our new mayor and Councilman McDougall to these accounts. So you can see on the first... The first several accounts, I'm not removing any signers, we're just adding the two new councils. And then, if you go to the second page, there are several police accounts here that need to be updated. These accidentally got changed when we removed the mayor and the other councilmen this summer, but we're needing to get those back to where they were to have the chief and some of the captains on there. So you can see those changes there. And the CDs, again, those are similar to the bank accounts themselves. And then on the last page, there are two new bank accounts that I would like to open. This is... One would be for our new Douglas County SPOLOST, because we don't want to mingle that with our other SPOLOST or any of our other funds. And then lastly, I'd like to set up a new debt service account. So again, we can keep those funds separate. We would transfer the money from the pool... Well, the general fund and the water sewer fund into this separate debt service account so that the money accumulates before each of our semi-annual debt payments.
On page two, all these removals of the council, why is that?
Those are for the police accounts, which are... Maybe David could speak more to this, but the chief has more responsibility for this. He has to know what those restrictions are for. So we are putting... So David is on that, and our chief of police, two of his captains, on the federal seizure and the narcotic enforcement account, because those are... Those have tight restrictions, and so we are letting those be under his authority. And then the PD Explorer account, that is for our police explorers. It's a small account, and so that would have... You can see the people... We're only removing one name, which actually I didn't even know who that person was, but the... We're adding the other captain to that. So those are the police department members that are part of that explorer program. And then the miscellaneous account, again, that's kind of a smaller account. That's mostly for our shop with the cop program. So we aren't necessarily writing checks out of those. If they are being done, it's through the police department.
Mr. Miller, do we need a motion passed here on this, or just...
Yes, sir. Because it has to be reflected in the minutes, otherwise, when the auditors go through, if the minutes don't reflect, actually, what they do is when the auditors come in, one of the first things they do is they actually send letters randomly to creditors. They'll also send letters to every bank, and they will actually pull deposit information and all authorized signers on all accounts. So when they get that information, if it doesn't actually match what's reflected in the minutes, then the city gets dinged for an internal controls issue.
But, sir, can I ask a question also to Sarah and David? Because I'm asking this out of ignorance. Is it customary to have as many signers on municipal accounts as we appear to have?
I know at my last two cities, the city council has always been on everyone. This city manually signs every single checks, with the exception of payroll. Payroll is digital signatures. So right now, the signators on that account are the mayor and myself on the payroll checks. But signing of normal checks is just a administrative function of the staff. But, you know, if we're not available, then the council... Ultimately, it's the council's, you know, control of the money and the budget, but it's an administrative function. That's a function of the staff.
I guess from an auditor's standpoint, we don't ever get written up for having that many signers, do we?
No.
That's not a question of the signers. The procurement policies and procedures that we have in place, that's what they look at. They've already... They were already here, and they've looked at some of our checks. So they look at who has signed off on certain things, what authority level do we have, and who signs the checks. So they are looking, but I don't think the number of people on the account is...
Okay.
What would more get us dinged is if... And this did happen in a city two ago, where someone was still left on there. It happened... This one was a strong mayor, former government, where the city clerk was on there, and the city clerk had been gone for like a year and two months, but they never updated the bank accounts. So that's an internal control. The reason that's internal controls is if it doesn't match the checks and balances, you're not in compliance of what the policy is. So we're just trying... But, yeah, every time we make a change, or like the bank changes name, yeah, get ready to do a lot of signing.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve these three pages of changes for signees on these 16 accounts.
Can you do a favor, if you would, if you would state...
Read the accounts?
No. If you would read it by update signer for as of and the date, and reference the document. The reason is, and again, as Ms. Harris said, for the public, the public's not seeing this document because you wouldn't want to... We all know who you are, so, you know, we're telling the public anyway that y'all are the signers. We're simply not stating the accounts so they don't actually see who's on what accounts and what accounts exist. That's always missed, even when we publish the check registry on the internet. We also have positive pay, so if the council doesn't understand that or know that. Positive pay is, for instance, if the city writes you a check off the general fund for $500, if you go and hit it, and the criteria from positive pay, the amount, the date, the count, everything does not match up, it immediately gets flagged. And keep in mind, last year, we did have someone write, like five or six, tried to forge the signatures. In fact, I think they use Madam Marchman's signature, in fact. Those immediately got flagged, and they don't hit the account. We just get a call from the bank that you have fraud. So I just wanted to say, reference it by the name of the document and the date, and that way the minutes are appropriately reflected, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the listed changes for the 16 accounts for the city of Villarica, update signers for bank accounts as of January 18, 2017.
Question. Let me see if I can get a second first. Do I have a second? A motion, a second, discussion.
Question. So what you're telling me is that there's going to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven accounts? That the council has no idea what's going on?
I believe it's five.
It is five.
Okay, five.
Five, yeah.
That the council has no idea what's going on with those accounts?
They're still listed on our... Like I said, if we write checks, it's very rare. Usually... Well, they're included in the check register on the website, that's what I was going to say. We don't touch the federal seizure CD. And then, like I said, the PD miscellaneous accounts typically for our shop with the cop, which is just once a year, and our police department handles that. The Explorer account, that's for our police explorer program. Again, they handle that. Those checks don't come through us. Federal seizure and narcotic enforcement, the only things I've seen those used are for capital... I think this year, we bought several accounts from... Several cars from those accounts. Those are things that are approved through the budget, and again, it's all shown up on the check register.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Call a question? All in favor? All opposed? So we do have... Is that two-to-two, or three-to-one? You approve? So it's three-one. Okay. Item G, qualifying dates.
This is respective to the municipal election for 2017. City Council wards number three, four, and five are up. For those in the public who are listening online that do not know what those wards are, those would be the seats held by Mayor Pro Tem Leslie McPherson, Councilman Gil McDougall, and Councilman Danny Carter. So wards three, four, and five are up for election on the 7th day of November 2017. As part of the process, the council is required to set the qualifying fees. The qualifying fees for... The qualifying fees for city council previously has been $72. Staff recommendation is to continue $72. Also, it is to set up early voting, and also qualifying for that. At this point, we're asking you to set the qualifying fees and the qualifying dates. The staff is recommending August 9th, 10th, and 11th of 2017, from the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., as the qualifying dates and times.
What was those times, from when to when?
We're staff recommending 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. on August 9th, 10th, and 11th.
Okay. And one change is going to be that qualifying would be at city hall, as opposed to at the county election office.
Yeah, I heard that from our city clerk, really.
Changing the law, we have to do it all local now. In fact, the city clerk and one alternate will be having to go to class training and get certified, and if they don't have that little certification, they can't certify you. We'll have to send you down to Willowbrook.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the qualifying schedule as presented by the city manager?
I'll make a motion, we set the qualifying for 2017, dates August 9, 10, and 11, from 8:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, and charge of fee is $72.
Do I hear a second? Motion and second, discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
What about the fee?
About what?
Did the fee? You blew to that, I'm sorry.
Okay, have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.
If you would, wouldn't mind coming by here, I've got something I need you to take a look at. After the, after the adjournment, I just need you to sign something here.
Thank you all for being here.